Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Roll call please, Siobhan.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. That was quick. All right. Our first order of business is we have a presentation from regarding the Climate Action Plan. Who is taking the lead on this?
Yeah, I can introduce Michael Richardson who's with the county. And the presentation was at the request of the city. So the county's been spearheading and the cities, I think all of the cities in the county have been participating in the preparation of a climate action plan. It's a regional climate action plan. So, you know, that's really preserving resources, you know, just taking advantage of that shared resources and just receiving the benefits of a regional plan. So, you know, fewer like financial resources in and then we all get to benefit. It's a regional plan, you know, air quality and climate are regional issues. And the purpose is to identify reductions, potential reductions in greenhouse gas emissions for climate, you know, climate benefits and also for some SEQA processing benefits that will streamline development. Anyway, that's in the presentation. I'll let Michael do that. But I just wanted to, you know, thank Michael for coming here and giving the presentation. And at the end of the presentation, it'll be open for discussion and questions. And then the intent is to receive comments from the council and the public and forward those to the Board of Supervisors if, you know, if that's appropriate, if that's requested. The, we've brought you the Climate Action Plan at certain key points in its process. And at this point, it is draft plan. So that's being distributed for public review. And then the intent is that the Board of Supervisors will consider directing the staff to prepare an environmental impact report for the draft plan. So with that, I will hand it over to Michael and his presentation.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Michael Richardson. I'm with the Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. I'm one of the supervising planners there. And we've been spearheading this effort, as Liz mentioned. It began in 2018 and we developed a memorandum of understanding with all of the cities to finance the preparation of the draft plan. And all of the cities participated in that. It took a little longer than we anticipated, but a lot of these big projects do. And then, of course, COVID kind of interrupted things for us. But in any case, I'll get into the specifics of the plan. I have a short presentation. As Liz was mentioning, the purpose of the meeting, there's, it's, there's a couple of different ones. First, we get that presentation and provide comments. City council members can provide comments to staff, open the public comment for, open the public comment period, receive public comments. And then the idea is that you would forward any comments, both public and city council comments to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. And at this point, they're, they're hopefully going to be considering it at the June 7th meeting. Originally, it was scheduled for the 24th, but I just could not get it on the agenda quick enough for that. The goal here, overall project goal, is to develop a regional climate action plan, which is adopted by each of the jurisdictions. And the focus here is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The other jurisdictions are using their climate action plans in a variety of ways in addition to reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. But ours is really focused on just that. And one of the, one of the benefits here that we're shooting for is if we have a climate action plan that's adopted by all the jurisdictions and we can make a good case that it meets the state's targets, then the project review for new development becomes a lot easier. There's right now embedded in the project review is a really difficult finding that your city council has to make and all jurisdictions has to make, which is what are the impacts of the project on greenhouse gas emissions? And if we've got a cap, a climate action plan that meets all of the state targets, we can just say, hey, it's consistent with the cap. We're good to go. Otherwise, there's a lot of work that needs to be done presented by the applicant. And so it'll reduce the cost of, of development is, is one of the main benefits. Here's a chart that shows kind of a rough, rough sort of way, the climate action planning steps. We first developed a GHG inventory, greenhouse gas emissions inventory that's presented in the plan. We reached out to communities and got their feedback on what the inventory showed and what appropriate measures might look like. And then we're, right now, we're in the third phase, which is to set, set the goals and select action. In this, this phase, I've got another figure that shows the timeline. But this third step is going to take a while. This is the very beginning of this third step. We've, we've done our best job. The city staff and county staff and our consultants have done the best job that we can, operating not, not quite in a vacuum, but in a somewhat limited public engagement arena. We've, we've got a, we did our best job to identify what the appropriate measures would be for a climate action plan. And, and so we've got a draft that contains that. And, and we're ready to move it to the next step, which is to do the environmental that. And, and we're ready to move it to the next step, which is to do the environmental review that where we'll actually develop an environmental impact report that analyzes the impacts on the environment. And then, one of the key, excuse me, one of the key features of the environmental impact report is going to be the identification of alternatives for consideration. And there's a lot of, of alternatives out there. The, the comment letter that you've received from the ranching community identifies some alternatives that are really important to consider. And, and so this environmental review phase will kind of provide a platform to, to accept all of that comment and have a really nice public discussion about what would, what would be appropriate for the county and all the cities. And then the, the fourth step here is after the climate action plan is adopted by all the cities in the county, then we would go about securing resources. You know, a lot of this stuff is going to cost money. And, and so we need to be proactive in how to fund the actions that, that are put forward in the climate action plan. And then, and then we take the actions and track and report on the effects of those actions. And then we, we circle back around to kind of adapt to the things that we've learned. And that's, that's a really important step as well. This next slide talks about what the statewide targets are. They've, they've been evolving over time. And the, the general trend is that they get more ambitious over time as well. And so the 2030 goal, I wanted to focus on that right now because that really is the, a primary target put forward in this climate action plan is the, these, and this is a statewide target, is to achieve 40% emission rates, a reduction of 40% from our 1990 levels. And so whatever we were emitting in terms of our greenhouse gas emissions in 1990, our goal is to be 40% less than that. And, and that would occur in 2030, according to our, our plan. And that, that would meet the state's goal. And that would set us up for being able to, to leverage our development projects such that they don't have to do any further analysis when it comes to greenhouse gas emission impacts. Another key feature is, or another key goal that the state has is by 2045, they want the state collectively, all of us, to be carbon, to achieve carbon neutrality. And that's a heavy lift. And so we need to prepare ourselves for that. As I mentioned, the, the target in, in this draft cap is 40% below 1990 levels. And that's to achieve the, the benefits that are available for meeting the state target. And the, the climate action plan not only includes an inventory of all of our existing greenhouse gas emissions, but it also includes a set of measures. And it predicts, all right, if you were to do all of these things, here's the reductions you would expect to see as, as a result. And like I said, we are shooting for the state target. We have identified measures that if you run the numbers, are going to achieve the state targets. And if you look at all of them together and compare the relative value of each of these different sectors or different target kind of groups in meeting those greenhouse gas reduction measures, here's, here's how it breaks out. And so the, the largest category, the most effective for the, the largest reduction in greenhouse gas emissions is through the measures that call for electrification of the existing infrastructure. And then you can just kind of read for yourself. There's a couple of them that are right up there with that, that one measure. You've got zero emissions vehicles, passenger vehicles, and then also zero emissions freight. And, and so the measures in the climate action plan that are targeting those sectors are particularly relevant and important for us being able to meet our, our statewide target. We've got some comments from the ranching community, and they're here to speak. I don't maybe need to talk too much about their comments. Just, I don't want to put words in their mouth. But they, they believe that the emissions inventory should include industrial point source emissions. And this is kind of a cerebral sort of a argument, argument to make. And, and it's important to understand, the, the, the way that we go about calculating what our emissions are right now, it's, you know, the, right now, when I say right now, we're using data from 2015. And, and that's another comment that they make, hey, let's update this data to be more relevant. And I couldn't agree more. But what we've got to go with is the 2015 data. As I said, this whole program began in 2018. And so the, what that does is it, it uses kind of established methodologies that have been identified by state agencies and others working in this field as guidance for local jurisdictions. And most of the jurisdictions choose to not include industrial, point source industrial emissions in their inventories because of a variety of reasons. One of them is that it's, it's really difficult to track. Like, you look at industrial emissions in Humboldt County, and, you know, you can, you can identify what all the sources are. Most of it is coming from the, the bio, biofuels plant out on the Samoa Peninsula. And then you can go around the horn and, you know, the Kerning Construction emits some, the dairies emits some. And, and so collectively, they're all included in these industrial point source emissions. And we've, we've not included those in the inventory as presented because it is standard procedure to not include those. And then also, there's a complicating factor that there's a, a cap and trade program with, that's operated by, at a state level. And industrial point sources are included, the larger ones are included in, in that. And so it's, it's a decision that has been made as far as this draft goes. But it, it's not a easy decision. There's good reasons to include point source emissions in, industrial emissions in your inventory. And, and so that's one of those alternatives that we really need to evaluate in the environmental document. And then the other comments involve making our, our inventory current 2020. Our CEA is in the process of developing the 2020 inventory. And they just told me that their lead person on that is, took another job. And so there's some supply chain issues with, that they're experiencing there that means it'll be a little bit of a delay before we get it. But couldn't agree with that comment more. Develop, and the third comment is develop a more accurate estimate of livestock emissions. Great comment. Love it. We definitely would, would like to do that. The fourth comment, quantify the amount of carbon sequestration. Yeah, if we could do that, we would be doing ourselves a great favor. And then fifth comment, consider the rural nature of Humboldt County in, for example, essential nature of propane use in outlying areas. And, and this is another great comment. And I just appreciate so much them bringing these forward to you and, and to the rest of the city councils for consideration. And, and the, the measures that we've got in here right now really do reflect more of an urban centric position. And that's because that's, most of the research has been done, most of the development in, in, in creating these emission reduction strategies have been done in the more urban areas. And, and so there aren't a whole lot of examples to, to take from when it comes to identifying what would be the appropriate set of measures for rural areas. And, and this is something where Humboldt County has a really strong voice. And I look forward to listening to that and to helping us round out our, our program here to reflect all of Humboldt County. So that ends my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or we could take public comment, either way. Thank you.
I'm curious, we point out that one of the goals is to be 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And are the point sources that were in operation in 1990 included in the targets that were supposed to be 40% below? Or are they not?
They, yeah, they could be.
They could be.
Right. We, we have not included those, but we could revise the plan. And, and as I said, we'll be evaluating that in the EIR. One of the alternatives will be whether or not those emissions, those industrial point source emissions should be included.
Because if they're not in there, what, what is, you know, it's kind of hard to hit a target that's, has a moving target on. It's like the old running buffalo in black powder.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that perspective. And, and, you know, I, I can have a conversation with somebody that is promoting the, the position that this draft climate action plan takes one day and have a, a conversation with someone who's on the other side that thinks that industrial point sources should be included. And I will come away with both of those conversations saying, they make great points. I don't know what is best.
When we were trying for our solid waste numbers, we had a complete picture of what our solid waste was and what our target was. And we reduced it below that tonnage. And we were able to achieve that. But if we don't have the correct numbers, we won't know what we're shooting for.
Yeah, right. That, that's a, a great argument to include those emissions and the reduction measures in the, in the cap. And there's, there's really good arguments, you know, you'll hear them, I'm sure, at some point, why they should be excluded. And, and so, you know, that's a debate that, that needs to be had. And people need to understand the complexities that both, both sides are bringing to the, to the picture in order to make an informed decision, I think.
I know Mike's got some things he doesn't want to.
That's okay.
I mean, um, thank you for being here and being a part of this process. It's quite involved. As I understand it, though, the state projections, as far as their target dates, I'm, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to achieve those dates on those times or those emissions at those times. But if we don't hit those targets on those dates, or we don't approve this cap countywide, are there penalties that are assessed by the state to whether it's against municipalities or the county?
The answer is no. Right now, we're operating at a, some, some people characterize it as a disadvantage because we don't have this regional cap. If we were to develop one that was adopted by everybody that meets the statewide goals, then we would achieve these benefits that right now aren't available to us.
So for the most part, then, to develop this, the, the cap, we're basically making it easier for the permitting process to go through with less cost for the applicant and in, at a quicker timeframe.
And I would, I would agree with both of those. And I would also add the notion of security. You know, the decision that a local government makes on its rulings to approve projects is subject to review by the courts. And if you've got a climate action plan, it's going to be very easy for the court to be able to side with you if you make a finding that this project is consistent with the cap and therefore it, it's good to go. Right now, our decisions, our land use decisions are subject to some instability, I would say, when it comes to potential review by the courts.
Okay, so keying on that, what, that, what you just said, I'm guessing then there is county council or some legal review of this process of this document that's happening?
Yes, that's, that's true.
Is that at the county level?
It is at the county level, and all of the cities are, are going to be taking a look at that as well.
Okay. A couple of specific questions. Mayor Gigna liked this next question. He knows what it is. With regard to carbon sequestering, do we know, is there a formula? And do we know what that is with regard to the loss of carbon sequestering due to the wildfires that we've had here in Humboldt County? Or if not, in Northern California?
You know, the, the numbers for carbon sequestration are really challenging. And that is one of the components that makes it very challenging is the unpredictability of the carbon stocks themselves due to wildfire and, and a number of other influences that are brought to bear on that industry, you could say, or on that particular type of stock. And, and so it's, it's going to be a tall hill for us to climb to develop a rationale and a defensible set of measures that include carbon stocks and carbon sequestration. I am hopeful that we will get there if we can. That will be just an amazing achievement. And, and it will have a tremendous, add tremendous value to our, our efforts.
And we don't have that ability at this point, but that is key with regard to greenhouse gas reduction. gas reduction.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Specifically, I'm looking at, and this is a huge report, I don't know if anybody's seen the pages, it's huge. And to try to go through this in any brief period is not possible, at least it isn't with me, I'm particular when I'm reading and try to get the context of everything. On page four dash forty-two, do you have that in front of you?
I don't.
I can read it to you.
I almost memorized the whole thing, though, so.
Under jurisdictions, decarbonize existing municipal buildings. So as an example, and I'm just throwing this out because there are a lot of areas throughout the report that include not only municipalities, but also residences, businesses. And so I'm picking on this because we are the city of Fortuna. Talk a little bit about this and what the city of Fortuna would be required to do if we were to try to attain those timeframes with those reductions.
Yeah, the decarbonization of the buildings essentially means electrification of them, and also it is to increase the energy efficiency of those buildings. And so with the county, for instance, we've got a fleet of corporation yards, and a lot of them were built in the early fifties, sixties, and making those buildings more efficient in terms of electricity would help reduce the consumption of, well, the heating necessary. And that would, if it was electric heating, a lot of them aren't, then if we were to move to a renewable energy source for our electricity, then that would become a decarbonization of those facilities.
But that is going to be a while down the road before we make that move to non-carbon electrification.
Yeah, that is true. And, you know, one of the, the really nice features of having a regional approach to this is we can do some negotiations with each other, where, for instance, if the county was to receive grant funding to make our buildings more energy efficient, and the city of Fortuna wasn't able to get that same amount of grant funding, then the reduction in that area with that strategy, the decarbonization of municipal buildings, we could trade. We'll say, okay, Humboldt County is going to take on more of the county's, you know, large responsibility for this, for meeting this implementation measure. And in trade, the city of Fortuna is going to do more with its municipal waste system, you know, something along those lines. It opens up the possibility that we don't have to achieve all of these targets alone. We can do it collectively and make, and use our resources wisely in a way that kind of balances it out for us collectively.
Okay. And I think we've already started that conversation a little bit about making those changeovers, and we've actually taken steps toward that with, you know, not only solar, but battery storage and those kinds of things. What maybe people don't realize is that we're talking about, for instance, heating this building is natural gas. And that entire system would have to be changed over to electrification of some type, whether heat pumps or whatever. And those kinds of changes are not going to be cheap by any means.
Yeah, I know. And that scares me. I think it scares all of us. The commitments that we are being asked to make are significant, and I would love to find a golden bullet, you know, that we could all just grab onto. Like, for instance, these ranchers, they know best when it comes to the emissions coming from livestock. And there are developments in that field that are promising, and we may be able to target that and, you know, relax a little bit on our other targets if we hit this one, which isn't even quantified in the document right now. We just don't have enough information to feel safe that, you know, that this is defensible, or whatever argument we put towards our, reducing our livestock GHG emissions. But there is some potential there, and, you know, if the county could pick up some savings there and spread that around the community, including Fortuna, so you don't have to worry so much about, you know, electrification of this building, that would be a great thing. I'm open for that.
That, and it's my understanding the state has what a hundred and ninety billion with a B dollar surplus this year? Maybe some of that money could be funneled into grants to municipalities and counties.
No, I think that's going to be happening. We need to position ourselves to be able to receive that in developing this climate action plan and kind of making sure everybody's on the same page is really going to be helpful for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
So my comments go back to Mike Johnson's nineteen ninety versus two thousand and fifteen. That's a huge difference, and we're pretty far down the road for nobody to be really considering that and making us go to this agency or these people who are working on this and beg for it, basically, when, in my opinion, it should have happened in the beginning because it says nineteen ninety levels. So why did we start at two thousand and fifteen? That makes no sense to me. I know how hard it is to change EIRs. It's not a simple thing, and it takes forever, even if we decided later on we were going to change it back. So why are we not doing that now? And then we're talking sequo. So if we started our two thousand and fifteen levels versus nineteen ninety, and we have some project that wants to come in that's going to provide a lot of jobs for our city or any place in the county, and we've got these higher levels that we're starting with, we may have to turn them down. That doesn't help any of us. So how do we get somebody to go back and take a look at this and start at nineteen ninety versus two thousand and fifteen at this point?
Well, the document includes both nineteen ninety emissions inventories and two thousand and fifteen inventories, and it identifies what the trends have been, and it projects what's going to happen in the future. Even if Humboldt County was to not take any action, it projects that our GHG emissions are going to be reduced because of all the statewide requirements. I mean, we've got new building codes, for instance, that require solar on residential homes. And so you can tell that even if we were to do nothing, our GHG emissions are going to be reduced. The question becomes, in the nineteen ninety inventory and in the two thousand and fifteen inventory, do you want to include the emissions from point source industrial uses? And that's a debate that we need to have.
And yes.
It shouldn't be a debate, though.
Right. It's how it was.
Yeah, I understand.
You can't go back in history and say that, well, this didn't exist, so now we'll have to meet this other number.
Well, there are important implications. It's not just documenting what existed. It's also moving forward with your strategies. If we are going to be moving forward with those industrial point source emissions in our inventory, then that means we have to develop a set of strategies that's going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from those uses. And right now, our plan holds them in abeyance, any requirements for these industrial point sources. And if we want to include those in the inventory, then we're going to have to include those in the measures. And so there's a give and take there that's important to recognize as well.
And one of the other things, and I'll be quiet after this, but one of the other things is, I was working here at this city when the California diesel ARB regulations went into place. And we had equipment that was dang sure ready to be replaced. And we had equipment that ran better than my personal vehicles. And we had to sell that well-running equipment for a dime on the dollar and replace it at full cost to meet the ARB regulations. And so there are municipalities, because you talk about electrifying corporation yards, so to speak, with vehicles and equipment. There are ranchers and farms all over Humboldt County that have equipment that was just replaced for the ARB regulations and given a new CARB registration number, that are now going to be told, okay, now you have to get rid of that, that is probably newer than the stuff that they had to get rid of to begin with to meet the ARB regulations. And that's not cheap stuff. And these regulations and this climate action plan has the potential to hit contractors, farms, ranches, and middle-class Americans, the working poor, because all those people are going to be told that your vehicle is no longer good. It doesn't meet the test. And that's what gets me more than anything, is the effect that it's going to have on the public. I mean, it's nice. I agree with the goals. I agree that there are things that we need to do, but we need to think through them and look at this, how we get there and the methods that we use. I remember that the grants that were available for local government were a little short window in time, maybe a year out of the entire history of that plan for diesel fuel replacement. And, you know, that's not going to cut it with some of this stuff.
Yeah, you bring up a great point, and, you know, this climate action plan does rely on incentives for a lot of these measures, the effectiveness of these measures. And if those incentives are in, are delivered in such a way that they are unattainable, like the window is too short, then we're doing ourselves a disservice, for sure. We'll need to make sure those incentive programs are up and running and broadly understood and available.
Yeah, I hope so, because it has the potential to really have a huge, huge impact.
It does. And Michael, going back to the statement that you made originally, that the industrial point source emissions were not included statewide?
No, that's just the general trend. In all the climate action plans, there's only one that we've found that does include the industrial point sources, and that's the plan for LA, LA County.
I would imagine if they're, if they are included, and then some of these changes that we're talking about would certainly include industrial changes that would cost a huge amount of money for corporations.
Yeah, that's the thing, is it opens up that need for us to include those in the mix.
I would think so.
So I understand the process of looking at what other people have done, other cities, other counties, whatever, but we're different. I don't care what they've done. We need to come up with our own plan that works for us. So if you guys have to work harder to find your own plan and not copy other people's that don't affect our county and our rural area like we need it to be, then you guys need a new plan.
Yeah, we haven't been copying plans of other people.
Well, you said you were looking for information, you were looking for reports that are out there. That doesn't necessarily work for us.
No, I know. And as I mentioned, there's a component that is really active and important in Humboldt County, which is the rural landowners. And this plan is not well geared towards their needs. I would say that. And part of it is, we just haven't had an opportunity to consult with these guys to find out what better measures could be put into this to make it better, more effective for them.
So how do we gear that? I mean, you said opportunities haven't been there, but they've certainly been around.
No, I know. We've been in this process for the last three and a half years to develop this climate action plan, and our inventory of other plans has resulted in the methodologies that have been accepted and provided to us as the baseline. Those are all incorporated in here, and we need to, at this point, do a strong public engagement effort to supplement what we've got with what's more appropriate for Humboldt County.
Good.
Well, thank you for your presentation and for answering our questions. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this item?
Yeah.
Come up to the podium, please.
Mayor, long before public comment, if I could just add to, Michael took this project over, you know, kind of late in the process, I think, after a couple of years, and he's been very responsive to the city in providing response to our comments and brought a nice transparency to it. So not an easy job, and I just want to recognize.
No, I don't envy you. Not at all.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Come on up to the podium, please.
It should be three minutes, but. All right, let's all agree, I'm John, let's all agree if we're going to make a commitment to fundamentally change life as we know it in Humboldt County, as mandated by the state, that we look at real science to measure our progress. The data in the cap is old. Most of the data is from two thousand and fifteen, seven years ago. But there is additional data taken from the census as it pertains to greenhouse gases in the housing inventory. The last census was two thousand and ten, so twelve years ago. The world has changed in seven to twelve years. Let me point out a few ways. In two thousand and nine, Tesla released its very first roadster car, number one. The number of electric vehicles and home charging stations available would not be in the two thousand and ten census data. The housing stock inventory in two thousand and ten didn't have any of the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty building requirements for solar. There were no micro grids. In two thousand and fifteen, there were very few commercial electric charging stations in Humboldt County. The heavy commercial trucking industry was just recently required to have fleets comply with particulate matter filters on all its vehicles by two thousand and twenty, not included in the data. Close to none of these vehicles were compliant in the two thousand and fifteen survey. So let's use accurate data, please. Data matters. The current cap was supposed to be updated with two thousand and twenty census data, and the person that was supposed to do this moved to a new position. Please insist to current and accurate data before agreeing to the cap. Keep in mind, the first Macintosh computer was released in nineteen eighty-four, and by nineteen ninety-four, every home in the country's had some sort of home computer. Ten years makes a huge difference in available technology. It also makes a huge difference in data. One of the options for the cap in the draft plan you have suggested is that we leave the nineteen ninety industrial emissions out of the plan. This is absurd. I urge you to insist that industrial emissions are countered in the totality. Humboldt County should take credit for all of the reductions we have made and are currently making to reduce greenhouse gases. If you believe in science and being accurate, please insist that we use real, accurate data that is complete. An analogy for this is Humboldt County is currently an A student, because we're seventy percent below the nineteen ninety levels currently if we include, if we include the industrial emissions. We're seventy percent already there. So we should include that. And the state of California, why should we make us a D student by not looking at the data available? The requirement to infill urban centers will fundamentally change Humboldt County's rural lifestyle. If you eliminate or deeply curtail people's ability to build on rural lands, what will that do to our lifestyle? Already developed rural land will become priceless, and underdeveloped land will become less valuable. The cap also looks at limiting methane from cows. The solution they have suggested is to feed the cows seaweed. This is extremely impractical, if not impossible, for beef cow. The new data from the dairy industry and their efforts in greenhouse gas emissions is not included in this report. If you can't raise cattle, farm, or build houses- raise cattle, farm, or build houses, or drive from rural land, what are private landowners going to do? The document suggests that we let it go foul. I urge you to read the document carefully, ask these questions, and insist on current, accurate data before committing to a plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? And you made it in three minutes.
Mine's going to be a little shorter than that. My name's Jeff Stackhouse. I'm a Fortuna resident. And I have three main points. One is to echo using the most current data we can. Because again, 2015 just doesn't make sense. We know it. The data exists. It's just a matter of paying someone to actually look at the most recent data and analyze it. So if we're going to write this thing and be pointing to it in the future, we might as well use the most accurate data we can. So that was point number one. And then a piece of that, I forgot already, is that including that 2020 data, we also need to include our natural resources. Humboldt County has more trees than any other county in the state. We have ample rangelands that are sequestering carbon as working ranches. We have, you know, water sources that are beyond anyone else's in the state, and none of that is being included. It's all discussed nicely, but there's no graphs with charts that add to the conversation. It's more talking points. And then again, I also agree with including the actual 1990 data as the baseline to include the industrial emissions, because we have been able to and will continue to reduce those emissions. I work with all the dairies in the county as my real job, and they all work with, they all go through what, not all of them, most of them are going through grant processes now called the AMP processes, to reduce the emissions on their dairies by using new practices that are supported by science. So even our point source data will continue to decrease over time as these producers are improving their techniques. So in short, let's meet the 2030 goal with the data that already exists and start working towards 2045. The last point I have, which is, like, I'm a range scientist, not a forester, but the other thing that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me is if you look at page, I think it's 4-46, is a table in that report, and it outlines some of the options of things we can do to generate more energy in our county. It lists things like windmills, of which we have no local expertise, and a lot of pushback. Offshore wind energy, again, no local expertise and a lot of pushback. One of the things it doesn't mention that makes absolutely no sense to me is increasing our biofuels. Like, so we have all of these trees, and we have, you know, only a couple biomass facilities, yet it talks in here about reducing tree density and increasing forest resilience due to wildfire, which Mike already mentioned. And if we're going to be using all these state funds that are being pushed through Cal FIRE to create shaded fuel breaks, reduce tree densities, and improve our fire resiliency, all of those fuels that could be turned into energy and keeping our lights on while employing the expertise we already have in our county in the timber industry are now being open pile burned, of which 100% of those emissions are going in the atmosphere. So is bioenergy a point source? Sure. But the alternative is to send it into the atmosphere without any filters at all. So I highly encourage you to press on the bio generation also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Long, members of the council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk on this. And thank you to Mr. Richardson. As Mr. Perry said, he was very helpful in helping us understand this. It's challenging and it's complex. And you heard many of the comments that I was going to touch on. So I think I'm just going to focus in on probably that 1990, whether we include or don't include those point sources. And the reason that matters is because our emissions, kind of as a community, reflects where we are economically and culturally, like what's here, right? That's kind of a reflection of that. So when you take that out, it really has the effect of creating what you might think of as an elevated baseline, right? We have our actual 1990 baseline, and then we have this elevated baseline. And that elevated baseline, as is indicated in the staff report, I think one way it was characterized is that we would, recognizing the state target would be reached without any new local programs, we decided to exclude industrial point sources from the 1990 baseline. So you get that elevated baseline, then you have an elevated burden. And that's the whole issue, the crux of why people are concerned about this. And I think in fairness to what Mr. Richardson was saying, that there's other people that look at that differently. So, you know, but we're looking at, hey, rely on the facts and avoid that circumstance. And we also, when we saw this, we're trying to wrap our heads around it, we were looking at other plans. Now, a lot of the other plans, they do exclude industrial sources. But they also exclude almost everything else. They're focused only on county or municipal operations. Not all of them. They're all over the place. But a lot of the plans that exclude, they're just on your corporation yard, or, you know, the vehicles or the buildings. So these plans are all over, and there's a little bit of uncertainty on the general practice, if you will. And I don't think there's one that's really a good fit for Humboldt County, as was pointed out. So I think it's worth the extra effort, because this is really going to have a long-term effect on how we do things here. And if we kind of use that elevated baseline for elevated burden approach, we're hamstringing ourselves, and we may not even know exactly how. And at the same time, we're doing it voluntarily. We can still do what needs to be done. Humboldt County can do its share for what, for climate change, without kind of setting us way out in front of or behind, however you want to look, what the rest of the state is doing. So I encourage you to ask. Now, the ask, so what are we trying to do? We know this document's going to, at some point, it has to transition to environmental review. What we're focusing in on is, you got to get the document that they're going to look at to do the environmental review, get that as accurate as possible before you go start the draft EIR process. Another way to look at it, I think that maybe the proposal right now is, hey, we'll just figure all this out in the environmental review process. But we think it's very important to get the starting point right before you initiate that process. To the extent the council has the opportunity or the interest in encouraging the county, let's get this lined out. Because we do want to meet the state target. I think while there's not strings right now, maybe there's not costs or penalties, they could easily show up. So we want to meet that state target. But we don't want to kind of chain ourselves to a block along the way. One other minor point as well is that there's also some uncertainty about the inclusion of industrial sources, and this could be on me, but there's some that are included, and there's some that are not included in the current, in 2015. So yeah, we exclude the pulp mills, but there's others that are listed. Some of the logic is, well, we should exclude things that are regulated by, you know, the air quality management district. But then we include a lot of stuff that's regulated by the air quality management district. So it's, I think that that part, getting that part right, is really key. And I do want to also acknowledge that Mr. Richardson has worked, this is complicated, and we don't want to undermine that, and he's worked hard to incorporate those concerns. So thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you, council, mayor, and staff. My name's Ryan Rice with Humboldt Prosperity Alliance. I just want to reiterate the same thing that Jack and Meredith said. Michael Richardson has reached out to us on numerous occasions and been nothing but great to work with on this. So it's very complicated. I'd just like to also reiterate the comments that John and Jack have both made, and also Jeff Stackhouse. I don't have a whole lot new to say, other than, you know, I think, I think if we're going to set ourselves up for success in something like this, I just believe that we need to use true and factual data. You know, and going back to the 1990 levels, I would implore that, you know, that we all push to use the true and factual data from those 1990 levels for the county of Humboldt. You know, it's going to create a real heavy lift for Humboldt County if we don't include that. And also, I would like to also push for the 2010 census data, 2015 Redwood Coast Energy Authority studies that are being used for currently where we're at, especially when you look at the different sectors that we're dealing with. I believe that in the last seven years, going to 2015, that we've had a lot of state regulation. And a lot of you know, take, for instance, transportation, commercial trucks. There's been a lot of upgrades in commercial trucks since 2015 for cleaner air, excuse me. As far as livestock emissions, we've had Dr. Frank Middler here in Humboldt County to give presentations on numerous occasions, at numerous different functions, to talk about livestock and how methane from livestock goes up in the air, creates carbon, carbon comes down, goes into the grasses. This is very basic compared to the way he explains it, but goes back in the grasses, and it's basically a perfect cycle. It's a cyclical process that happens with the cows. And so that being said, and AMP, AMP programs and things of that nature that have been happening the last seven years, I think, you know, we're doing a good job there. As far as electricity in the last seven years, how much more electricity are we getting from, you know, solar and wind now as opposed to before with all the new technology? So, you know, honestly, I'm going to end with this. I don't care what the end policies are at this point. The policies could be whatever they want to make them. But we need to build those policies on true and factual data. And we need to bring that 2010 and 2015 data that is being used for current right now into 2022, 2023. So once again, thank you, council.
Hi, my name is Emily Stackhouse. I'm with the Buckeye Conservancy and other local nonprofit. And so kind of to just again, reiterate some of the same topics, we have the same feeling that it's imperative to use the most current data. I think using our emissions from 2020 will be very important moving forward, rather than using 2015. The document does say that in the future, they would update the emissions inventory every five years. So it's been five years, so let's update it to 2020. We would also strongly recommend including the industrial point source emissions in the 1990 baseline levels, as everyone else has mentioned as well. And lastly, I'd kind of like to expand just a little bit more on the livestock greenhouse gas emissions. In the document, they are 13% of our local emissions of the inventory. So they're currently the second largest contributor behind transportation. And like it was previously mentioned, the methodology that is briefly described in the document needs to be expanded upon and discussed further. They even mentioned in the document that there are, recent research has shown that there are more improved ways that we estimate methane emissions from cattle, and specifically that the GWP 100 method that they used has been shown to be inaccurate and can overestimate methane emissions. The primary source of emissions from cattle is methane. It's quoted that it's 73% coming from beef cattle in the document. And so like I mentioned, they discuss the GWP 100 and the GWP star method, but they need to use both of those and actually do a full comparison, specifically since they mentioned that the GWP star has been shown to be more accurate than using the GWP 100. Methane is 20 to 25 times more potent than CO2 as a greenhouse gas. And so that is why methane is of concern. But like it was also mentioned, methane goes through a cycle in the atmosphere, and it is only around for 12 years compared to CO2, where it's sticking around 500, 1,000, we don't really know. So using more recent methodology in calculating greenhouse gas emissions for livestock, I think is especially imperative if we are going to consider them to be our second largest contributing source. That can also help us in the future in how we're actually going to reduce those emissions. The seaweed was mentioned previously, and from a ruminate nutrition standpoint, there's been research that shows it doesn't have longevity in reducing emissions for long periods of time. And secondly, if we have to think about feasibility of how are we going to get this to our cows? What is the cost? What is the transport trade-off of trucking seaweed into Humboldt County? How are we going to get it to our beef cows? And also, it doesn't really seem to be a feasible option to grow it here. So those trade-offs are things we have to think about in looking at that as a reduction method as well. Thank you very much. I would just encourage that having up-to-date data is going to be most imperative as we move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here tonight, and we have a lot of work to do. And Mr. Richardson, I do appreciate your involvement and your position, and you're not in an easy spot at all. So thank you for all of your hard work as well. All right, we will close public comment and move on to our other oral comments. Does anyone have anything they would like to address the council about tonight that is not on the agenda at this time? Come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, mayor and honorable council members. My name's Melissa Marinas, and myself and my family own Fresh on Main Street. I am currently the secretary of downtown merchants, and I'm aware of some of the changes happening with Fbid. So naturally, this led me to be curious on what was going to happen with the core areas, specifically downtown merchants. So myself, my mother, who's also a co-owner of Fresh on Main Street and another downtown merchant, attempted to contact local owners in downtown area. We didn't have a lot of time to do this. So within the timeframe we had, we contacted 18 owners. There is approximately 94 downtown merchants in Fortuna. Out of the 18, excuse me, all of the 18 we spoke to, we gave possible outcomes for what downtown merchants might look like. One of those options was for downtown merchants to stop paying assessments and dissolve the core areas. Another possible outcome for downtown merchants was to continue paying assessments and to have the city of Fortuna control the funds and plan events. And the third was to keep downtown merchants, how it is now with downtown merchants controlling the funds and planning the events. Of the 18, 16 were for stopping paying the assessment and dissolving the core areas. One expressed that they would like to pay the assessment fee and have the city of Fortuna control the funds and plan events. And the last stated that they would like to keep downtown merchants association the way it is currently. I appreciate the opportunity to express to the council and the mayor the variety of opinions regarding downtown merchants assessment.
Okay, so this is on our agenda, and because you guys came tonight, we were going to move it up and have a discussion in just a couple of minutes.
I apologize.
You're fine. You're fine. So anyone from the public have any comments that are not on the agenda? Anyone else? And you can come back up when we actually discuss this. Hi, Sean.
Hello. Hello, Sue, council, mayor. Those who don't know me, I'm Sean from Riverlife Foundation. I just wanted to come here tonight to let you guys know the progress that Riverlife Foundation has made in our community. We never stopped during COVID. We always kept going, cleaning up trash. Our new totals are 458,000 pounds of trash that we removed here in the Eel River Valley. This weekend, we're going to do another cleanup, and we will easily break 260,000 pounds of trash that we already looked for and scouted out for this weekend. Also, on a really great positive note, on Tuesday of next week, I will have helped 182 people get reunited with family onto a job or into a rehab. The partnership between the city of Fortuna, Fortuna PD, and Riverlife has continued to grow, and just really appreciate you guys. And I just wanted to come here, thank God council's open to finally no masks, so super glad. And Dennis Went Memorial Trail is looking great at the north end of town, as we continue to do more in that area to make the north end of Fortuna even more beautiful. And just thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. Anyone else have anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we were going to go ahead and move our discussion item for Fortuna Business Improvement District up so that you guys didn't have to sit through everything if you didn't want to. We basically just have a brief update from our city manager, so I'll let him fill you in on that.
Yeah, so the council took this up at a special meeting last Thursday and a discussion was held at that special council workshop and really just alternatives were looked at. There were no Fbid board members present, but the council explored the various options that were laid out in the staff report, including discontinuing the assessment, which created Fbid altogether, bringing Fbid in-house and discontinuing, updating municipal code to remove the nonprofit corporation and have Fbid revert to an advisory body. And the third option that was identified in the staff report was for Fbid to, to continue, to be discontinued, continue as is, or to be updated to not be a nonprofit corporation. So no action was taken at that meeting yet. Since that meeting, we have received the notices of resignation from the Fbid board members. They have agreed and we asked them to stay on board at least till June 1st so that if the council decides to wind down Fbid in the nonprofit corporation, that those corporate officers can still be involved. So the council hasn't made any decisions yet. The public input that was heard at the special workshop was that the core area is still very much would like to see that assessment continue, but there were not a lot of commenters. So I think it would be important for the council, if there's members of the public who feel differently, business owners. The meeting was held at nine o'clock, 9:30 in the morning and the meeting time in the morning was requested by the Fbid board. Again, they didn't show up. So if there's business owners here, I would recommend that the council take public comment from those business owners, especially if it's contrary to what was expressed at the workshop last Thursday.
All right, thank you, mayor. So does anyone from the public have any comments? We heard from Melissa already.
My name is Kevin Bradley. I'm with Allstate. I'm one of those local businessmen. I'm not quite understanding, what exactly did Fbid decide at that meeting then?
Nothing.
Nothing? That's what I thought. I do believe that there's a purpose for that and I think if the city was to take that on, I think it would help with the downtown area. Now, how we go about doing that, I don't know. But I leave that up to your astute decisions, but I just think we need to use something to continue our downtown landmarks that we have. It's historical and it's beautiful. But I think if we disband that, we're going to lose a little something there that kind of helps that to grow. I don't know what the answer is, but I just think we need to do something for it. And I agree with what the ladies were putting together. I appreciate their efforts, so thank you.
And I would just say, you know, the council hasn't made a decision yet. We expect this to come back at the next regularly scheduled council meeting unless we schedule a special workshop sooner, but we're still working on some of the details of the different options and that's really why the council hasn't decided yet. So this discussion will continue and there will be some decision items on the upcoming council agenda as well.
So basically in our workshop, every scenario had questions. So it's like, well, can you go back and find out if we do this, can we do that? And so that's kind of where it was left. We had so many questions regarding any of the three. And so we just need to get some more answers and then we'll meet again and have more discussions because we love meetings. Please come up to the podium.
I was totally not expecting to say anything this evening, but I am Kathy Comer. I own Fortuna Fabrics and Crafts. So I am in the downtown area. There is a certain amount of apathy with the business owners throughout in participation with the downtown merchants and Fbid as a whole. And I think that's been part of the problem is that there have not been people willing to participate within those organizations to help keep things going. That said, when everybody says, we want to do this, nobody wants to do anything. So I understand the problems that the people have run into, but there is a certain level of apathy that concerns me that the Fbid board members requested the meeting at 9:30 and yet none of them arrived at that time. As a business owner, I had to be at my business to work and set up my store and do things. So I was unable to be able, any part of participation with that. And I think that is one thing that you will find with business owners, we are trying to survive. We are treading water and every time there is a meeting that's scheduled in the middle of the day, sole proprietors have to find somebody to cover for them or shut down their business and lose what little business they would get during that time. So I would hope that in the future that the meetings would be put in a time period that those of us that want to be involved and want to help be a part of the solution rather than the problem, that we would think about that in the future. The other concern that has come up repeatedly within the different organizations, and one thing I just want to say, downtown merchants, we're always going to be there. We're always going to be working hard and trying to do stuff. Fbid, downtown merchants predates Fbid. Fbid came after the downtown merchants association was there. It has been there before Fbid and we will survive after Fbid if Fbid disappears because there's a core group of us that want to see downtown go back to what it was, retail and people looking and walking around, which is why we have the events of First Friday, Charm Walk. We've had these events pushing for people to come down there. So when you guys are talking about Fbid and what to do and those type of things, while the assessment fees do help us in the process of doing it, we have some incredible people that are involved and pushing for fundraising and doing these things so that we can have these events on our own. So it's not going to hold us back if you eliminate Fbid. I think there's been a lot of problems within Fbid because complacency has been throughout everything because there's been so much turnover in every aspect. So like I said, we're going to survive and we will do it, but what you guys decide to do is going to make the difference between how it happens. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you for your input and we will definitely let people know when there's another meeting scheduled. So, all right, we will move on now back to our normal agenda. Our consent calendar, we have 11 items, including city council minutes, administrative department monthly reports, monthly reports from the community development department, finance, parks and rec, police, public works, river lodge, report of dispersments, declaration of surplus property and authorization to dispose of surplus property, which resolution 2022-14, authorization to file the final subdivision map for Smith Lane subdivision. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I'd like to pull E and F.
Okay. Mike Losi, anything?
Nothing.
All right, Mike Johnson, what do you got?
Well, one is the police report brought out and reinforced the fact of Jade Campbell being the employee of the month for the police department and her dedication and diligence in fulfilling her job as a dispatcher, which is not always an easy thing to do. You can be, have a quiet evening and all of a sudden it blows up and sometimes literally. But I just wanted to recognize her for the public, for her being the employee of the month in the police department. And I'll just move right into, yeah, parks. I wanted to mention a couple of things. One, I walk in the parks in the morning and driving through town, I mean, things look great, the medians, the park, everything looks really great. They do a great job taking care of things and it's, again, just shows the reason that so many of the school districts come to Fortuna for their end of the year events is because we have some great facilities. And mentioned that Alex Service is back in the office, so to speak. It's actually the museum, not an office, but she's back at work taking care of the museum. And thank you to all the volunteers and the people that stepped in while she was gone and kept the museum open. So just, that's all I wanted to mention.
So piggybacking off of that, I was in a meeting with several other cities and we give like little member reports at the end and I talked about our improvements to our parks and buying more parkland and everything. And it's like three or four of the other cities said, we are very envious of Fortuna's parks. You guys have beautiful parks and you take such good care of them. So that was pretty cool. So thank you, Cameron, and all the parks people. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. City Council Business, our second reading for our zoning map amendment. Is this you, Liz?
Yeah, honorable mayor and council members. So, excuse me, this is the second reading amending the Fortuna zoning map from residential single family R16 to residential multifamily RM. The applicant is Tyler Franklin. And the two parcels involved, one parcel is Tyler's parcel, 806 13th Street, and then the city added another parcel, 809 12th Street. And I gave the full presentation at the last meeting, at the first reading, so I'm not going to do the overhead. I'll just give a super abbreviated refresher just to get it in the record. So the general plan land use map was modified at the last meeting by resolution. And so the zoning map would be the second reading. There have been no changes since that first reading that was on May 2nd. The staff has not received any public comments or any new information. The two parcels are located on the north side of N Street between 12th and 13th at the craftsman style structures. The one on the west is occupied as a fourplex, legally nonconforming fourplex, and the residents on the east side on 13th Street would be converted to a fourplex. And those are generally, those are compatible with the neighborhood, with the downtown zone on the south and then creating a transition, visually and functionally appropriate transition with the R16 zoning to the north. So the recommendation is to open and close the public comment and then hold the, a motion to hold the second reading. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
All right, thanks, Liz. We probably asked all our questions last time, we're good. Anyone from the public want a comment on this item? All right, we'll close public comment.
Make a motion to hold the second reading and adopt ordinance 2022-754 and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Siana?
Ordinance 2022-754, excuse me, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, amending the Fortuna zoning map from residential single family R16 to residential multifamily RM. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is the one that's going to take forever. First reading for the mandatory organic waste disposal ordinance. Merit.
Thank you, Mayor Long. And I also just want to point out Linda Wise with Recology, our franchise haulers here. And even though we're focusing on the ordinance, Linda answered a lot of questions that came about in the practical implementation. We also have Gary Bell, which he's with the Coolintano Law Firm and he's been on the Zoom meeting waiting. We're going to do our best, we're not quite to the hybrid platform that we want yet, but we'll at a minimum, we'll have Gary onboard for the audio, so. Let me just check in. Gary, can you hear us there? We're going to get started on this item and I don't think you'll be able to see the presentation, but we've got Gary here and so we'll attempt to bring him on either through video and/or audio after I get through the presentation. Our city clerk's working on it. Again, we're halfway through our transition, so at a minimum, we'll have Gary on an audio.
Okay.
Let me know when you're ready, Siana. Gary, if you can hear me, we're pulling you up on the screen right now for council. They can see the Zoom feed.
There we are.
One second, let me turn that up. Gary, can you just give us one more audio test? Gary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
One more time, Gary, could you just give us a test?
Can you hear me?
Barely.
One second, we'll get you, we'll get you up.
Wonderful thing when it works.
Okay, we're going to do our best here.
I know that Gary can hear us and we'll do our best to get him on as we get started. So I just wanted to run through a brief presentation and it'll include a little bit of background on SB 1883 and then it'll have a few specifics on the ordinance. So, okay, so the staff recommended, staff recommendation is to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance. 2022-755 adding chapter 8.14 to the Fortuna Municipal Code, establishing mandatory organic waste disposal reduction regulations to implement enforced cow recycle organic regulations in SB 1383. And one thing you'll notice is that we did include this as a separate chapter in the Fortuna Municipal Code, whereas last time we brought it to the council with just generic arbitrary section numbers. I don't think Gary can hear me. Gary, sorry, I had you muted. We're starting, we're proceeding with the presentation.
Yes, well, and I'm making the PowerPoint and then we'll bring you up in just a minute.
So a little bit of background, organic waste is the largest waste stream in California and you can see the various components on the slide that make up for that, but a large part of that is the organics that would normally go to landfills, including paper, food, lumber, and other organic waste. And as was mentioned in the climate action plan earlier, methane is one of the, they call it a super pollutant and organics that go to a landfill are responsible for generating a lot of the methane. So that's why the state has taken up, the state has a concerns for organic waste and the creation of greenhouse gases and that was really the driver for SB 1383. So there's, we're going to talk a little bit about timeline. This is the original implementation timeline. The legislation SB 1383 was first passed in 2016. There's a goal of by 2020 to have a 50% reduction in landfill organic waste. And again, that's preceding SB 1383 in 2022. The intentions are that the regulations of SB 1383 will take effect. One of the things you'll see later in the presentation is that we're delaying that implementation at least until January 1st, 2023. And then by 2025, to see a 75% reduction in landfill organic waste and then 2025, see a 20% increase in recovery of currently thrown away edible food. So the council has seen this, so I'll just run through it briefly. With the state legislation, the responsibility for these programs falls on the city, all the way from organics collection, which will mean collecting organic waste at all of our residents and businesses. And that'll happen through modification of our franchise agreement, establishing food waste, edible food recovery programs, conducting education and outreach to the community on how they best can recover or recycle these organic wastes. The city will have to implement policies to procure recyclable and organic products to find a, to be able to generate demand. Municipalities will have to have a certain amount, purchase a certain amount of recycled material. And then- material, and then secure access to recycling and food recovery, and then the city will be responsible for the monitoring enforcement of these, these new programs. I won't talk too much about the three bin system, but they are included in the draft ordinance, so the interpretation that has been affirmed by CalRecycle is that all residents and businesses will have to have the three bin system. There are some exceptions which are included in the ordinance, but those will include the three, you know, the three bins, the solid waste bin, the green bin, which can include food waste or green waste, and then the recycling. So currently, residents can opt to have that service, but with this ordinance, it become mandatory. So, a little bit on the education, again, that'll be another component. I won't go into too much detail, but currently, the city has not developed an education and outreach program yet. That'll be something that has to happen after this ordinance is passed and before the implementation deadlines set in. And then also, the city will be required to procure a certain amount of recycled organic product, and there's a few ways that we'll be able to do that. The state has looked at the amount of waste that the city generates, and they'll be using targets to identify whether or not the city is compliant. And so, for the city to be able to comply, we can either purchase compost, purchase mulch, purchase bioenergy, or purchase renewable natural gas, which is produced from the, derived from organic waste. And so, it's really not going to be feasible, the last two, which would be bioenergy or renewable natural gas. So, the thinking is that our primary way to achieve this would be for the city to purchase up to five hundred and sixty-one tons of mulch, or, or of compost, or nine hundred and sixty-seven tons of mulch. So, the state has said, hey, there's probably not markets for all this material, so we're going to dictate that cities will buy this. In addition, there'll be policies for purchasing recycled paper, other, other products, so that's one area. We're hoping that with our Parks Department, we'll be able to use some, but it's, it's quite possible that we may not be able to, to use that amount of material. One of the questions, where are we going to take this food waste? Great question, there's not a spot yet. So one of the things that we're looking at in the short term is finding a location where we can have a tipping floor, where we could take the organic waste that's currently thrown into the garbage, and then haul that offsite to a disposed, approved facility. But ultimately, it doesn't make sense to move that material out of the county and transport it. And so, what really needs to be done is either something like the city does with its biosolids, which is to have a digester to reuse amount of solids that come into the waste stream, and then compost it and add a carbon source. So, you know, the city's already doing this, it's not rocket science, it's a very basic biological process. There are more sophisticated systems, but this capacity needs to be developed within the region, so we can avoid hauling that waste. And so, I think the ideal situation would be there'd be a private entity, and ultimately all the jurisdictions pull together, and we find an entity that would propose on something like this. But if not, then, then the jurisdictions, all the jurisdictions would have to come up with a solution. And again, I think a private solution would probably be more cost effective, but in the absence of that, then the region will have to figure out something else. So, just a brief bit on the enforcement process and timeline. Again, the origin, you know, the city, we, the city really doesn't have a choice to comply. If we don't demonstrate that the city is moving forward with incorporating this of complying with SB thirteen eighty-three, and then the state, really the recourse would be that CalRecycle would begin to find the city. So we're taking steps to do this. This is really the first step, is the passage of this ordinance. We're working at, with the other cities in the county, in Humboldt County, to develop a compliance roadmap. It's, that won't be a published document, but it essentially spells out all of the different steps that will be necessary for the long-term compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. And initially, the, the big driver is where do we take all this organic waste? Collecting it. Recology, our franchise hauler, has always, already ordered the bins, they've ordered the trucks, they're going to be ready on January first. We will be able to find a short-term solution to haul this out of the county, or haul it somewhere to an approved facility. The next big step is going to be how do we recover the edible food that's currently being thrown away? And do our, our local nonprofits have the capacity to be able to recover this and distribute this food? And that's a big question, they're still working on that product, but those are the two deadlines that are right in front of us right now.
So when you're talking about the region is working on a plan, who's heading that up?
So, we, the city is participating with all of the cities in the county, and a contract was put out, HWMA agreed to manage the project, so I've had a lot of involvement, City of Eureka, Arcata, all the cities have been participating, and we crafted an RFP, we hired a consultant, and HWMA is administering the contract, but we've been very hands-on in being a part of it. It's not so much like some of the other county plans where, you know, we're peripherally involved, we're really helping to, to drive this, and we've had a significant amount of involvement at, in crafting what the scope of work is, and reviewing the deliverables, and helping to steer the decisions that are being made along the way. So, and, you know, with, you know, without, if we had a city engineer, you know, they may step up right now, but we have one Public Works Director and a very small engineering department, so this is something that I'm leading in the short term, because we really don't have other staff that we can assign this to.
Are we providing any administrative fees for that?
Yeah, so we contributed, I have to look back at our total, I think it was just under ten thousand dollars. So, all the jurisdictions had to submit proportionally, and that was distributed based on population. Some of the entities that are members of HWMA took some of the funds that they contributed to HWMA, and they, a portion was paid for with, with their, the fees that they paid to HWMA, but the city isn't a member, so we paid our direct share. So, everybody's contributing proportionally to that effort. And I will say that it's going very well, and when it comes to solid waste and implementation of new regulations, it, it does make sense to work together, because we're all having to do the same thing, rather than each one of us embarking on a separate effort, and we have great cooperation with the other cities and with HWMA, it's been working out very well. So, I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but these are all the different elements that are included in the ordinance. It's essentially just a outline list of everything that is in the ordinance. So, requirements for, and I think I'll go into detail on the ones, I think, but essentially, that I think the council would be more interested in, but the requirement for single-family and multifamily to have that waste collection, to, to, to implement programs for edible food recovery, to, you know, there's provisions in here for self-hauling if generators, whether they be single-family or businesses, choose to haul their waste instead of subscribe to the program, there's, there's kind of a off-ramp for them. And also, compliance with the CalGreen requirements for building code, the model water efficiency landscaping ordinance, and then the procurement, how would the city buy materials, and what are requirements for materials? So, there's a number of those items that are within the ordinance. I think the key areas that the city really is going to be interested in, the biggest change for our residents is going to be that mandatory collection is required for all businesses, individuals, and single-family residents, the development of the edible food recovery program. Again, people are interested in self-haul, there's people who compost all of their waste, or there's people who are really good at self-hauling. CalRecycle is, you know, in talking with CalRecycle representatives, they see this as the exception, not the rule, so our plan would be to, you know, the, the way this would roll out is everybody would have service unless they're able to, to get a waiver and demonstrate that they're self-hauling. So, that might be one question you have, but when we pass this ordinance and it becomes effective on January first, twenty twenty-three, everybody's going to have service, and the only way to get out of it is if they do the self-haul provisions and opt out. So, that's a pretty big one, I think that's the most significant change.
And who decides whether or not they get to opt out?
So there's provisions, and again, Gary's here, I'll get him in the conversation in a minute, but there's provisions in this.
Because it said the city, right?
The responsibilities, the responsibilities on the city, so people would have to fill out a certification form that they're taking the organic waste, and they're hauling it to an appropriate facility.
Under the waivers for generators, it says the enforcement agency.
That would be us.
Okay, well, that's what I, I didn't know if it was us, or if it was Humboldt County Environmental Health, or?
Yeah, so we, and we'll get into this, I want to get Gary in the conversation, I'll finish the PowerPoint, but we do have the ability with this ordinance, this is one of the things that Gary's been helpful with, is we have the ability to delegate to others, and so there may be efficiencies if, for example, we contract with County Environmental Health to do some of the oversight work, and the city doesn't have to do it, perhaps we could reduce staff's time and the, the requirements for city, on the city.
So for self-haulers then, would it be on the city to do inspections on those self-haulers? Or how, how would that be handled?
We're, and again, I want to get Gary in in the conversation, but I think that the, the thought is that they would have, there would be a waiver that would, they'd have to have a certification. I don't know, Gary, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. In terms of inspections for the self-haulers, there's a five-year certification based on feedback from the workshop, and the city would only be conducting additional inspections or looking into that if there's some reason to think that that self-haul wasn't actually occurring.
So, did you hear the answer? There's a five-year, so they'd have to certify, and essentially, we'd have a simple form that would, would say where, you know, that they declare where they're hauling their own waste, where they're going to haul it, and we just want to do our due diligence to make sure they're doing that, and either have them renew annually, every five years, or upon a change of address if that took place. So, it's, it's not going to be hard for them to demonstrate that, and again, that's using the CalRecycle template, but we did extend that time period for the certification to five years. That was one of the pieces of input that we had at the public workshop on May second. So, again, I, I put these in there, these are more in case you ask, but there's a number of sections in the ordinance, eighteen point one four point oh four zero four zero and zero five zero, those really establish the requirements for generators of organic waste to have the three bin system. And, and there's discussion of the waivers in that as well. And then, eight point one four point zero seven zero really defines what those tier one and tier two generators are, and what their requirements are going to be for donating edible food and their record-keeping. And again, the city is going to be the repository, we're going to be required to collect this information from those generators. So, it, I just thought this slide was important for the council to understand, we're going to be picking up supermarkets, grocery stores, food service providers, food distributors, wholesale vendors, restaurants, hotels, health facilities, large venue events, River Lodge, so this is really going to be an all-play. I had a good discussion with some of the grocery store owner after the chamber meeting today, and so my, my hope is as we develop these food recovery programs, I don't want to do it in a vacuum and not include some of our grocery stores, and, you know, this would even cover the rodeo association for, for large venue and events. So as the, part of their special event permit may be that they have to track how much food that they're going to recover and, and measure those volumes, so it's going to touch a lot of aspects of our daily routine, at least for both the tier one and tier two generators. Developers and property owners, you know, I, you know, development community is very active in the City of Fortuna. There, there's not a huge change here, the biggest one that I would say is that, you know, we already have, there are already requirements on our builders to comply with the CalGreen requirements, but I think the biggest one is, we really need to make sure that we're enforcing those construction demolition debris and trying to reduce the way there. This is already part of the building code, but having the three bin system at new developments, so making sure that if there's new apartment complexes and, or other commercial buildings, that they, they have the space to be able to have the three bins, and that they're also complying with the waste minimization provisions of the CalGreen in the, in the California Building Code. And then model water efficient landscaping, there's, you know, there's requirements that they use a certain amount of this recycled product, and the details aren't in here, but there, all new landscaping will be required to have approximately six inches of compost, or new, new exposed dirt to have three inches of mulch. And, you know, I looked at that, and I thought, boy, is this something that CalRecycle put in here, is it completely impractical? But I talked to a couple landscape contractors that I've worked with, and they said, you know, normally, we do include these things, so that's an area that I don't think it's unrealistic for folks who are doing landscaping to be able to comply with that. Again, record-keeping, that's going to be a big one. Food recovery organizations will report to the city how much food they're recovering and, and in pounds, and there's some of the information on the slide that they'll be required to turn into the city, but, you know, this is a really, this is an area of concern. One of the things that I want Gary to weigh in on the council, but I'm, you know, I'm less concerned about the city being able to collect the organic waste and, and, and be able to meet the January first, twenty twenty-three deadline that we proposed in our notice of intent to comply, but I think food recovery is going to be more tricky. We don't have a report back yet from our consultant who's doing that food recovery plan, but there are relatively few food recovery organizations in Humboldt County. You know, for example, is food for people going to be able to, you know, service all of our businesses here in Fortuna? Do they have adequate freezer space to make sure this food doesn't go to waste? You know, in the absence of capable food recovery organizations, this could be a really tricky one, whereas in some other communities where you have very active food banks, and they have a lot, a lot, a lot more capacity, Humboldt County's spread out over a large area, and this could be one that's pretty tough. So I'm hoping that we can make the food recovery component, or at least I would propose to the council, that's the one change I'd have in the ordinance, is I'd like to shift this to June of twenty twenty-three instead of January. I don't think there's any way we're going to be able to meet that, and if the council agrees, I would, I would like to make that change in the ordinance, and Gary can point to the provision, or the proper section.
All these nonprofits are going to be, not just Fortuna, but Eureka, Arcata, Trinidad, all these places are going to have the same thing, so it's, do they have the freezer space?
Yeah.
Refrigerator space?
To, to be seen, and you know, one of the things that does give me a little bit of confidence is that the consultant that we're working with has done this in a number of communities. They don't seem alarmed at all, I'm pretty nervous about it, but they seem to be pretty confident they're going to be able to identify what the stream of recoverable food is, and they'll be able to identify what the capacities are. And the real question is, you know, are we going to be able to support the organizations that perform that recovery work? And it makes me nervous, but, you know, I might be less confident than, you know, our consultants are, because they've seen this happen and work in other places, but we just haven't seen it to this scale. You know, a lot of the smaller cities, they, they can get waivers on the collection of organic waste, you know, at the, you know, as a, for the mandatory service, but they are not going to be exempted from the recovery of food waste. So, it's going to be, it, it will be in all-play on the food recovery portion of this.
So, have we been in communication with the food pantries here in town?
Not so much yet. I'm waiting for the draft plan from our consultant that really looks at those capacities, and then, once we receive that draft plan, that's something I'd like to present to the council, but we're, you know, we're going to have to adopt a policy, and we're going to have to see what steps we take next. So, that's one of the really tricky things about this, the, the, the organic collection and disposal. Our next step will be to work with Recology to incorporate that into our franchise agreement and figure out a way to pay for it. We don't even know where it's going to go yet, but we can negotiate that franchise agreement and the tasks that Recology will have to do. With regard to food recovery, it's unknown, you know, will we have to enter into MOUs with food recovery organizations or not? I don't know the answer to that yet, but it really just depends, you know, will generators want to haul that waste themselves to, you know, Eureka if they have a large facility there, or are we going to have to develop satellite facilities? And, you know, if those food recovery organizations can't do it, are we going to be responsible for helping build that capacity and pay for some of those improvements? It's one of the things we just don't know, and we're being forced into this timeline to avoid being in regulatory jeopardy.
Well, and some of these local, you know, pantries, if, the sooner they know about that, and even though we don't know numbers or how this is going to eventually, you know, sort out, but it just puts them on notice that this is something that we'd be looking at, and you might be receiving, you know, this, this, these food items.
I talked to the people at the Parrish Activity Center, and they don't have the staff and the space to, I mean, they only collect that stuff once or twice a week, not seven days a week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the sooner we make contact with, whether it's the SDA or the PAC, and let them know this is coming down the road. We don't know specifics, but this will.
Our consultant is conducting outreach with every one of the food recovery organizations, so, and they're identifying those, so we're relying a lot on them. Again, they've done this in a number of communities, this is something the city never does, so we're going to get that report, and then we'll bring back. But that's the real difficult thing about passing this ordinance, is we're, we're agreeing to program, to comply with programs, develop programs that we don't even know what they are yet, and, you know, that's, that's a tricky spot to be. Self-haulers, there's provisions in section eight point fourteen point one zero zero for self-haulers, report to the city, and I just wanted to point out that we did change the certification to every five years. You know, most people aren't moving or changing addresses that much, we wanted to You know, most people aren't moving or changing addresses that much. We wanted to avoid the, the paperwork nightmare of having to get those reports and, and see them back every five years. This will be probably one of the things that we're asking Recology to, to do for us. So, or not, not to get the, the, the self haul reports, but they'll have to track who's self hauling and who's not. So we don't want to have to be in a state of flux and changing who they're collecting from every couple of years and send out bins and then until we get their certification. We don't want to do that more than every five years. So.
Will that entail, um, having to get receipts? Um, that would of course have to wait, but also the type of refuge?
Pretty much be, um, this will pretty much be the certification form they submit to the city. And so Recology is going to give them service unless we give Recology a form. Now, I don't think we've determined how we get, I think the city will be responsible for collecting those certification forms, getting them to Recology. And if not, they're going to have service.
Okay, but for the self haulers themselves that take the garbage or whatever to Recology, are they going to have to get some kind of a form other than a receipt?
Yeah. Linda, um, Wise may have some comments on that one.
We, we already track where people are coming from, so it's not really, you know, that big of a deal to do it. So it's, it's on the receipt.
So in the, from the city side, we'll be depending on the certification. You know, if the state says, you know, you shall verify or we think your certifications are bogus, then we'll have a way to check. If people say, hey, I'm hauling it to Recology and then we never see their address show up at Recology. It really depends on, you know, if we think people are being honest and if CalRecycle wants us to, you know, puts a burden on us to demonstrate or, you know, perhaps audit the certifications to make sure they're in fact true. So it's hard to say how that's going to be interpreted, but we have the ability to track it. Thank you, Linda.
So it is possible that the self haulers would have to provide information about who they are and address and that type of.
That's right. We're, we're going to ask them where they're hauling it and that they'll have to certify that that's where they're hauling it. And, you know, if we don't have to pursue it beyond there, great. And if we, we find out that, hey, a lot of these certifications are bogus, then we'll probably have to, you know, tighten that up and figure out a way to track them.
So you're talking self haulers as in hauling to the dump, but like mine would be hauling to my business because why should I pay twice?
So, and again, that's.
So.
So we can develop a certification, you know, so say for example, you're a business owner and you have waste that, you know, you have residential and commercial service and, and we certainly would expect to be able to have a certification. You know, so if Sue Long as a single family homeowner said, hey, I take all my waste to my business, that'll be one of the options that we put under a self certification. Now, I don't know how that would be handled in our franchise agreement. The, from the city side, we need to make sure that everybody's taking their organic waste somewhere and not throwing it in the garbage. So the way we track it is a certification form. The flip side of that is, you know, we have to, we're, we're telling Recology, we want bins for all of our citizens, we now have mandatory service. So we don't want to have so many exceptions that, you know, we don't really see any new service. But there has to be some practical, um, reasons for those certifications, uh, you know, such as I already have service at this other address. Did you have anything to add or does that sound accurate, Linda?
Yeah, and we can already do that, um, put that in there. But one of the things that's going to be part of, um, as the, looking at the waste stream over this 1383 is that they're going to be, there's going to be some monitoring of what, what's in people's garbage cans, you know, how, how their organics is improving. So, um, they'll be able to see that and it's probably going to be happening at the tran, we have to do it at the transfer station as well. And we're already doing that to, to monitor, you know, the input of organics. And to your question, we, we don't take down people's names, we take down their drivers li, their license plates when they come through. So it was for a different reason. It was like if somebody like were to jet out of there and we could collect the next time, you know? So there, there are ways to track it and how much material is coming in and from where.
Are you going to have to floor sort this, like real dirty Murph with the food in there?
Hopefully not.
Right now, it's, it's not likely that Recology in the transportation of Fortuna is going to be receiving organic waste. That's outside of what they can accept now. So likely it'll be another facility in the region. Recology would pick it up at the bin and then they would haul it to whatever facility that there's going to be a tipping floor and it can be consolidated for hauling initially outside of the county in the long term to wherever that facility is.
So I don't think the type of detail that you're talking about with regard, for instance, with Sue hauling from her house to her business is included in the ordinance, but does it need to be? Should it be?
Gary, I don't know if you heard that question, but the question is if somebody has a reason that, you know, um, is other than their self hauling to an appropriate facility, should we include, um, the option if they have another weight? You know, for example, if somebody has a business and they take their personal waste to their business, should we include specific language in the ordinance to allow for that? Or is that something that we can handle in the development of a certification form later?
I think it's broad enough as drafted to include it in the certification form that'll be developed by the city manager and staff. It requires that it be transported to an appropriate facility, but that would be accomplished by going through the commercial subscription, by bringing it to a business and putting it in the right receptacle there. So I think it's broad enough to cover that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm looking out for you.
So I think I just have a couple more slides. So our next step is, you know, one of the reasons why we're pushing this schedule here is there was a grant. It's a small grant. It's a minimum of $20,000. If we can have the first and second reading before June 14th, we submitted an application, we could qualify for that grant. It may be more, but it would contribute the, the funds the city needs towards that. Consultant effort, staff time, legal review time, development of the draft ordinance, franchise agreement. So it would go a long way towards covering those costs at a minimum. And so that's kind of a small incentive the state has thrown out there to encourage us to move rapidly on this. Other than, that's a carrot, you know, there's not, it's not a big one, but there's definitely a stick out there as well. So, um, as soon as we pass this ordinance, we'll be, uh, and we've already started negotiating the franchise agreement and revisions with Recology. We need to get that done soon, even though they've proceeded in good faith and they're ordering all the equipment that we, they know they'll need to be able to service the city. We still have to agree to those terms of, um, compensation. And then the tasks that we're going to ask them to take on that would otherwise be the city, such as, you know, route reviews, the nature of the, you know, how much waste is in, in these different cans. So, um, we have a good partner with Recology. They definitely have the capabilities to do, um, the things that we're going to need. And then, um, we already spoke about participating with HWA in the development of that food recovery program. You know, I'm very interested in this because I'm less certain of how we're going to achieve it, um, but this is one that is going to be coming up next. So with that, staff's recommendation is to reduce and conduct a first reading of ordinance 2022-755 and adding chapter eight point one fourteen to the Fortuna Municipal Code, establishing the mandatory organic waste disposal, reduction regulations to implement and enforce CalRecycle organic regulations in SB 1383. So Gary's here, he, he helped draft this and, and put it into its current form. And Gary, we don't have any other members in the public here than, than staff, so going to turn it back to the council.
I think you covered it pretty well. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
All right, no questions. So Gary, thank you for being here.
Did you hear that, Gary?
Public comment?
Mayor Long said, thank you for being here. They don't have any questions.
Well, thank you for having me.
All right, so we will open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
Lady weigh in the bag?
The 432 people that are here. All right, we will close public hearing.
I will move. I'll move to conduct the first reading and adopt ordinance 2022-755 and read by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Sienna?
Ordinance number 2022-755, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title 8 Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding chapter eight point one four, Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you for being on, Gary.
All right, so we are to city managers' report. See you next time, Linda.
Okay, uh, if our city clerk could pull up our calendar schedule, if not, I can just run through it real quickly. And our projector died again. So I just have one thing that I wanted to bring up. I, um, have a very brief city manager report and I'll, I'll put up the meeting schedule next. But it's, it was pretty interesting. We're taking all the rubber chips out of our playground and we're, you know, we are putting those, we are putting back, um, and then, you know, a engineer specified wood chip. And so we had all of our general services crew and all of our parks crew out there today at the, um, the larger, the two break playgrounds. I forgot what it's called, the five to 12 year old playground at Roner Park. And so they're removing those and by the end of the week, they should have the wood chips installed. There's a 300 yard pile of wood chips sitting over there by the pavilion. It smells really nice, but, um, it's, it's a big effort. It's one that our staff has wanted to do. It's a measure e funded project. So I just wanted to let the public know if they're trying to go to that playground, that one's going to be occupied. The tot lot though is available and that playground is open.
There's another playground over at Newburgh also.
And Newburgh Park Playground is not there, but you will notice it might be enhanced fun. There's a large pile of rubber chips. So we're taking the rubber chips out of one playground and augmenting those. And it's a playground safety project. You have to have a certain depth of, of, um, the chips. And so we're going to recycle the others, um, over to Newburgh Park to make sure that has a minimum depth. And the long-term goal is ultimately having all those, those playgrounds with the wood chips. So I just wanted to, um, briefly go over the upcoming meeting schedule. We had a special budget meeting this morning. We will have another, um, special budget meeting at May 23rd at nine o'clock AM. That's an in-person meeting in council chambers. Our next regular council meeting, um, will be on June 6th at six o'clock PM. And I think I have that on there twice. Our next planning commission meeting will be on May 24th at 6:00 PM. Our measure e committee meeting is way out there in September and our next Roner Community Recreation Park District meeting is on June 6th. So the, the big focus in those upcoming meetings will be the passing, working on our budget and we hope to be able to adopt the budget on June 6th. That concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you. Um, any future agenda items that we haven't talked about already? All right, council reports. Mike Johnson?
I was able to participate in the Redwood Division meeting for CalCities. And it was informative and that's where I heard the district attorney's office speak about the AB 109, 47, 57 and how that's impacted things. Again, I'm at a loss as to understand how this, they're shutting down prisons and doing all that. How they're shutting down prisons and saving money everywhere, but none of it's filtering to the local agencies as we were told that it would. But it was informative and we had a good time to be back in person too, so. And city of Eureka did a good job hosting. I won't say everything about that because somebody else may want to have a report on that. So I'll leave that part there. One of the things that I learned from the, the Transportation, Communication and Public Works Policy Committee report out was that there's another bill besides the one I had sent to Merritt already that would, uh, put the California Air Resources Board in as the arbiter of a, whether a project is, uh, to be funded or not, depending on how it meets their criteria. So that is something we want to be aware of and I'm surprised we haven't gotten a request to write a letter of opposition yet. But that's probably coming. My, have a HCOG meeting this coming Thursday and we are in person also. So looking forward to that. And with that, I'll pass it on.
All right, Mike Losi.
Thank you. I haven't had any meetings since the last council meeting. I have a meeting Wednesday, uh, for LAFCO and then, um, the third, and it'll be next week for RCEA. But I do want to remind everybody that the 2022 Annual Fortuna Chamber Dinner is in person and it's this Wednesday, May 18th. Tickets are $75 and it's at the North Coast Hitching Post, which is out Table Bluff Road. It's going to be a lot of fun. Um, it's going to include a murder mystery program and, um, and then a dessert dash. And I'm not really sure what that's going to be, but, um, tickets, I think there are still some available. And, um, check in is at five, uh, social hour starts at 5:30, dinner at 6:30 and it should be a fun evening had by all. Just want to remind everybody that ballots went out last week, mail out ballots went out. So a reminder to get those ballots marked and back in the mail and handed in and sent in for the June 7th election. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Well, lots of city meetings between FBIT and Budget, so that's keeping us all busy. This is the second time we've been at city hall today. Um, last week I had a quick, uh, executive meeting for REDACT to approve a line of credit. Um, we'll have our regular board meeting next week on Monday after the budget workshop in the morning. I didn't get to go to the bike rodeo because I had baseball games and a memorial to go to, but I've been hearing really positive comments and it was a great turnout from what I'm hearing. So I'm excited that the Parks and Rec are starting to do more things with the youth and I think just bike safety is just really, really important. So I thank them for doing that. Um, I did go to the Kiwanis, uh, 80 year celebration to present them a proclamation and they had a good turnout for their, um, lunch. I had to leave quickly because I had grandchildren, but Mike Johnson was there representing, so this is good. League of California Cities meeting in Eureka was, uh, very informative, a lot of legislation and a lot of, uh, opposing lefts amended because Sacramento is just flipping crazy. And, um, you just can't even wrap your head around the things they sit around and think of. And even in their own bills they're trying to pass, you have one directed at parking and then, you know, four down on the thing. We have another one directed at parking, so they can't even come to any kind of agreements. And it's just, this is frustrating. But anyway, Sarah Sanders, our rep, does an amazing job, um, getting us information and, um, walking through those bills with us because some of them are pretty complicated. But it's always fun to be able to get together with our peers from other cities and, uh, we did the skywalk. Did you do that?
What's that? Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. We did the skywalk at the zoo, which I had not been on that before and that was pretty cool. That was our little outing after our sitting in meetings all day and then we had a great dinner at Oberon, say, Oberon Grill.
Oberon, yeah.
So they did a good job putting it together, so it was nice.
And got to see a baby owl.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a pretty cool skywalk thing. I don't know how much it costs normally to go, but they said they're having a lot of tourists, like their hotels are filling up just because of that one venue that we've added, so kind of cool. So anyway, um, we do have a closed session item tonight. We have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 54956.91 case. So we have no public here to comment on this item before we go into closed session, so we just need a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Move to adjourn the closed session.
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second to adjourn the closed session, so we will end our regular open session now and all in favor.
Aye.
Okay.